I wrote my city council story last night and in this morning I was going, oh my God, I forgot all about that. Joe P. Let me have to throw one more paragraph.
You had to go back and redo.
Hi Brad.
Yeah.
Morning.
Morning.
Yeah, I don't think that will be the last of those kinds of meetings probably.
I would guess.
When we get into it this fall, I'm guessing we'll probably do it together.
Because the city incoming laws have to be, do they have to be the same?
I don't, they, they.
Just in the joint, just in the joint jurisdictional area, whatever that is.
No.
How far out, how, how far out is it?
It varies. I don't know. We went redistricted that kind of and we have a map of it. I want to say it's two percent miles from somewhere.
Okay.
We do, or First District has a map of the joint jurisdiction area. All right, we're getting there. I think you're excited about that. No, it's the week and you're looking forward to Friday. I can guarantee you that. Oh, what's that?
Well, some guy, a guy did show up yesterday and looked at the contract. I don't know who he was. I don't know who he was. He said he does some, something up in Rawville Township, but I, he didn't say what. Yeah. You did, yeah. I noticed that.
Yes, it's the new, new guy.
All right. It is nine AM, so I am going to call the meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I skipped myself a few weeks ago, so I'll lead today.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number two, call for public comment. We will still take calls from individuals. The two phone numbers are eight eight two six two four eight and eight eight two six two nine seven. Those are for items that are not on the agenda and for information only. Also, I would remind everyone that if you have a cell phone, if you would please silence it, if you need to take a call to step out into the rotunda and we are streaming live on YouTube. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners?
No.
All right. How about item number four, action to approve the June 22nd, 2021 agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the June 15th, 2021 minutes of the Board of Cottington County Commissioners.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. We'll move on then to Emergency Manager Director with Jamie, monthly report. Morning Jamie.
Good morning.
Morning Jamie.
Good morning again. All right. I don't have a lot that's happened since our last meeting, other than some statistics and things. I'll start off with training and exercises since our last meeting, May 26th. We did conduct a Region Two, 10 county exercise with our tracking systems. That's kind of a technology-driven app and using what we call battle books and resources and doing mock scenarios. That was kind of an interesting thing and some of, all of us learned quite a bit out of that one. June 15th, I traveled to EM 101 course that's offered by the State Office, which they actually sponsored and taught. Gave us a lot of, myself, more intel on how things play out as far as related to disasters and relationship building, et cetera. The following day, came right back to Watertown. We did a salamander tracking system, which was kind of what that exercise was based on. I don't know if the, the state had those two dates reversed a little bit, but more of that. June 7th through 11th was a big one for me for the week. I did travel with Peyton Sardo from First District. And we did site visits on all of this Tier Two and Sarah Title Three, reporting for hazardous materials with our industries and, and local co-ops. Updating pictures and things like that. Hopefully that hazmat, hazardous mitigation plan will be finished up and brought to us, the Commissioners by this fall, September, October to be adopted. And that's a five-year plan. PDM is also, will be another one coming up in this next year or two. So. The only response I really had was the severe weather. We had that early Friday morning hours a couple of weeks back where we did end up with a 57 mile an hour recorded wind gust. And only roughly a half inch of rainfall out of that system. Very minimal damage in the areas and the towns. It sounded like just some tree branch stuff here and there. Moving on to our COVID numbers, that thing is really dwindling down, which is a good thing so thus far. Our current report from the Department of Health is showing the state with 154 active cases, looks like 17 and two probable yesterday. There's only 31 hospitalized currently in the state. Our actual Cottington County only has two active cases and no, no one hospitalizations from the local website. Our vaccination numbers in the state are at 362,000 roughly, still only 56% on the state level of administering one dose. Cottington County sits at 11,902 thus far, yesterday's current dates, which still is about 42% of our population. So moving forward, that kind of brings me into last week's news. While I was in here, we got briefed on, from the state, the US drought monitor. For our county has now moved into a D1 category with moderate drought conditions occurring. And that went into effect June 16th was the current data. I think that possibly updates again this coming week. I don't see if it's going to change much more than that. We are relatively green, but not. Things are drying up quick. That was an additional, in the, as far as the state is concerned, on the drought moner, monitor, 79% of the state is now in a D1 category. Our monthly rainfall total for our local area is only at 49 hundreds, just under a half inch monthly rainfall, and that's a big departure, down about two inches. So those are some things coming up on this agenda that I think we'll be looking at here soon. That's about all I got. Is there questions for myself?
Well, I'm wondering, yeah, then, so there's two items. I'd also like you to be, so we'll move to item number 12, review possible action to approve the MOU payment for the mass vaccination event consultant. So I received an email from the mayor. They were here, if you remember, and talked to us about paying a third of her consulting fees. So this would be, so it is in your packet if you go further down. The $10,000 is what they're talking about right now. We would need to get an invoice from the city though, I believe, right Cindy, to do that. So it would be Prairie Lakes Hospital, City of Watertown and Cottington County if we would decide that we're going to do a third of that first $10,000.
Well, they're mentioning $20,000 in this.
Yeah, but I think they're just doing the first 10 right now.
We've only been, from what I understand was the first statement.
I know, I seen that, but when I talked.
We will make payment in full on both of the above referenced invoices.
Well, that isn't what I heard from.
It, I'm sure, I think, explains that, okay, the first invoice will be, which is attached as Exhibit A is for $10,000 and then they, they anticipate an additional $10,000.
Later. At the end of the year, I believe, is when that other third will come in. So I believe it's the first.
When you look at understanding, Section 1, you're going to make a payment of $20,000.
Right, no, that's, it says, yeah, totally. I mean, that's when you had, it's just saying it's divvied up into two $10,000 invoices. That's why it's a little confusing.
Yeah, so I, so if you look at the invoice, the first one, this one is for $10,000.
Yeah, we'll need to be invoiced to pay our share.
And I don't know if that's what this is, if that works or not.
No, this is, this is for the consultant. This is an invoice for.
So I believe.
From the consultant to the city.
Right. I believe what they're asking for right now is for the first $10,000 and then they'll, I think it all depends on now when they submit this to the state, which will be Prairie Lakes Hospital. I don't know if they're going to just submit the $10,000 or if they're going to do the 20, that part, we're not sure about.
On the email that I read, I, I'm going to say, I thought I read that they're going to submit for the 20.
And then they'll see.
And then if she would push forward with additional, if COVID mass vaccination events have to keep moving in this fall, if we do have another outbreak. But a lot of hers will still entail the meeting plannings and that, so I don't know if she'll hit. In best defense, I think Prairie Lakes will probably submit for 20,000 through the Department of Health on this COVID recovery, recovery money.
And then we will know what the state's going to reimburse on that because then if they get reimbursement, then they'll put that back to us as well if they get some reimbursement.
The MOU would, would state that Prairie Lakes would reimburse the counties if they got the full payment from the State Department of Health. So, which I, Kate, I dealt with the gal from here on that and she said all of those are subject to be reimbursed.
For the full amounts, or she didn't really say?
I didn't get that answer.
They'll ask for that. I mean.
They'll ask for it.
They'll ask for it, is what it says.
Yep.
Right.
So, so basically. Consulting and contract and fees did state from that, that statement on what she gave me, so that they qualified.
So basically, if we agree to this and the Department of Health does not reimburse Prairie Lakes, who would reimburse the city? Then we'd be on the hook for a third of whatever the curass is.
Yep. And then that would be the third of the 20,000.
Yep.
Is what we would end up to.
Okay. And I, I think with all the recovery money that's out there, I, I see it getting reimbursed, I hope. But those channels might be a question further out for Department of Health's preparedness and planning team.
Well, I would like to motion to authorize the chair to sign this.
Second.
Got a motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen. Any other discussion?
Just so people understand what we're talking about, this is, this is for the consultant that helped organize.
Coordinate and organize.
Coordinate and organize the mass vaccination. The mass vaccination event, so.
We've already had discussion.
Yes, they were here, they came to the meeting.
Yeah, I'm just letting the public know, so that what we're talking about, so they, they understand. So basically covering the costs of work, of work that's been done and sharing that with the jurisdictions.
Sharing it between the three, three organizations.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. Let's move down then to nine, number 16, discussion, possible action to pass a resolution to enact a ban on open burning. I know Brad wanted to be part of this conversation as well.
Yeah, I'd invite Brad up. He has some of the state statute laws that kind of play with this.
So Jamie can lead it off. I just, well, he kind of already alluded to the fact that we moved into the D1 category.
The drought category and there's not much of a precipitation chance looking into the near future. The 14-day outlook and six to 10-day outlooks are not looking good. Grassland danger index actually has moved up to some moderate categories, those Haynes indexes. And 20-foot winds are those marks with relative low humidities. We're looking tomorrow afternoon. A very moderate side with some heat and some wind again. But yeah, looking forward just on the, the weekly side of this, that, that index is going to remain six or high. Six is already kind of a high mark. Out of those that they give, they, only chance I'm seeing for possible chance of thunderstorm looks to be Friday.
Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday night and Friday, there's just a slight chance.
Slight chances and not, not any measurable looking stuff unless a big thunder.
20 to 30%.
So you have heard, you've been in contact with the local fire departments and.
I have been in contact with all of our county departments. The Fire Chief of Watertown, along with Brad, this criteria and these elements are meeting, are, we're meeting those criteria moments of, it'd probably be best interest to move into a burn, large open burning ban. Average call is looking to be on the, on the CAD, according to Fire Chief Roland out of the City of Watertown, 45 average call in controlled burns. Those are the things that are the fear factors. We are green, but they are still burning. I witnessed, I didn't witness, but I had pictures sent to me out of the North Brookings and Toronto area yesterday at Southern Duel. Where a motor vehicle with a bad bearing or an implement started separate spots in a four-mile stretch. Very green grass, but it is still moving. So it's a slow burn, but if there's a wind or a shelter belt next to that. I think our bigger, not only concern with the public safety, but the responders that have to fight these things in 100-degree heat is an element and factor as well, so.
And also keep in mind, we do not meet next week, so this would be out for two weeks when we put this on. Right, but Brad has some information on that, I believe, you know, if we enacted, there's certain state laws that supersede on some of this for discharging of fireworks, so.
Neighboring counties as well, Robertson Duel are looking at this as well today. I know Duel's doing a special session on it, so. Everybody's kind of becoming on the same page with what's going on now that that drought monitor kicked up another category, so.
So could you, could you clarify your recommendation once again? So you said.
I would recommend by reaching out all county fire departments other than to know that we have a problem and looking forward into another week, they're kind of 50/50, but by a vote of about five to two, we're all in favor of enacting an open burn, large open burn bans. Our burn ordinance.
Which would not affect.
This is not, and now that fireworks thing comes into play.
That's what I was going to go with.
Let Brad take this, he's studied some statutes here.
So, okay, by, by enacting a burn ban, it does, our county burn ban that we have and our county ordinance that we have, it does not affect fireworks. There is a state statute that allows fireworks to actually be shot off June 27th until the first Sunday after the 4th, so July 11th. So there's two weeks, two full weeks of being able to shoot off fireworks this year. There's a new updated law as of March 21st, or March 25th of 21 here, that the county can, if they would want to, by resolution enact a fireworks ban essentially, if the extreme, if the fire danger goes to the extreme level. As you can see here, we're still a couple, what, three clicks away from that. I don't recommend doing anything with fireworks. If we're to do an open burn ban, I would say that's a good start, in my opinion.
Right, so this.
Yep, that, that would be the starting point of this whole thing is, we don't want people burning large rubble piles or their pits.
So just.
Tree branches, just because of that. The element is one little spark and the shelter belt next to it. And then you include a structure next to that, things could get carried away.
So just for clarification on this, just so I make sure I understand.
Sure.
No open burning means no pit burning, no.
No open pit.
Right, but it does not pertain to fireworks, so people would still be able to shoot fireworks off in the county.
That is correct.
During, during the time period from June 20th to July 11th.
27th this year through July 11th is what the state statute allows, so they're permitted by state.
So we don't have any, state law supersedes us on that.
No campground fires.
I.
As long as it's in.
I need to read this ordinance.
By the definition of our ordinance, as long as it's in that three-foot controlled circle and we don't have any, the state parks run their own. So just per se as we would Memorial Park.
You, you can essentially still have a campfire, but if a spark escapes and start a fire, you are liable.
Reliability falls back.
Get a citation for county ordinance 13A.
Okay.
Yep.
So, so when you say a large open burn ban, how do you define large?
Anything over.
Open burning.
Open burning brush pile, and you know, there's not a lot of activity going on currently. Most of that stuff was done this spring.
It just opened.
Common sense factors on a large brush pile, if somebody's thinking about that, you'd really want to say no to that if there's wind and elements of danger.
What we're doing here is.
For the. Correct. We want to.
We can still have campfires and fireworks.
We're talking large.
We're, we're talking large open burning. Not, like I said, not a lot going on, but if somebody was considering doing a, a large of their own personal pit or what have you, or old barn structure, a lot, and common sense is going to go a long way here, folks, and that's.
Well, I'll make a motion, but I probably gonna need a little bit of help in trying to decide what I want to say here.
Sure.
We put a burn ban on large.
It's just a ban on open burning.
It's just a ban, just what it says on the agenda.
Large is not specified in the statute.
Yeah, we can't specify.
Yep. It's just.
Everything's spelled out in the ordinance, so.
Ban on open burning.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion in a second. If conditions do change, since we do not meet next week, I would be willing to call a special meeting and take it off if that's deemed necessary. But as of now, it will be on then till our next meeting, which is July 13th.
And we're, we're moving into a more drier part of the year.
The sixth.
We're either going to get thunderstorms or we're going to get nothing.
We don't get two weeks off.
We're going to need some really good soaking rains, I think, to turn things around, so.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. You'll get that information out. Will you send it on Nixel too?
Yeah, I'll share it with the Sheriff's Office as well. I'll do a PSA.
Effective immediately.
Yes, effective immediately. All right, that should take care of it. Thank you, Jamie.
Okay.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ben, since Brad is here, we'll move on to his report.
Pass it that way and pass it that way.
I didn't hang on to it.
All right, looks like everybody's got copy there. We'll start with the front page there, the monthly balance sheet for the month of May. The bank balance end of May is $6,516.25. Copy fees collected were $28. Sheriff's fees collected were $5,398.75. And warrant fees, we collected $500 for a grand total of $5,926.75. Jump to the next page there. Lee's actually got it pulled up on the big screen, so look at the Sheriff's Office activity on the first screen there. In May, Sheriff's Office responded to 592 cases and calls for service. 14 accidents, accident reports were completed, 103 warrants were served, 192 civil papers were served. And there was 3,200 transport miles put on transporting inmates and people around. We jumped down to the middle of the screen there. You can see in May, our average daily population in the detention center was 64.48. See that's starting to climb. We've been hanging around the 80 to mid 80s here this last whole month of June, so that number is going to jump considerably in June's report here coming up as well, so. We've been creeping up there a lot. Our high ADP was 74, low was 57. Scram, on the SCRAM bracelet, 24/7, we had 19 people. We had 35 people on the twice daily PVTs. 59 people on the twice weekly UAs and three people on the sweat patch for a grand total of 116 people on our 24/7 program. And there was 215 bookings done in the month of May. That stays kind of consistent if you look at the last four or five months. If you scroll on down to the bottom a little bit, you'll see we collected $6,719 in out-of-county contracts. Work release fees were $2,360. You see those are starting to kind of ramp up. We're starting to get into that business again, I guess, getting our inmates out to work. 24/7 fees, $7,946 collected and SCRAM fees, $2,761 were collected.
That seems pretty high. Are they higher than usual, I don't.
Think we're just starting to kind of get back to where we probably used to be back in the day. You can see how they kind of dropped off around COVID here. I think we're just starting to slowly get back to where they should have been like two years ago before COVID here, so. You can see we're starting to slowly get back to normal, what the new normal is here.
So with the 24/7, I'm get, with people going in and out at the different, is that different now with all the COVID precautions or are they kind of, you think we're pretty much back?
Still using precautions, you know, because we're still coming into jail here. We're still masking up when they come in to do a UA and they're still, we're still taking our precautions just because we still have a vulnerable population in our facility that we have to keep an eye out for. Maybe in the future, those are things that will maybe ease a little bit more.
Right.
Like I say, for the time being, we're still, still monitoring, trying to get back to business a little, one step at a time.
Thanks.
Just a couple things that we're working on here. Cransburg, 4th of July, coming up here on July 3rd, that's a large event here for the Sheriff's Office. We've kind of worked with Tori Borg, Sheriff of Duel County there. We're actually going to send a couple guys over and help out this year at their, their big rodeo, which starts tomorrow. And it goes through the weekend here. That's a busy event for our detention center. It's a busy event for them. Then of course, we have a big event where they're going to send someone over to assist us on July 3rd. So working with our partners back and forth, been, been good, so. That's a very, very busy weekend for Cransburg and for the deputies and for all law enforcement, I should say, so. We're doing a lot of planning for that and trying to make sure everything goes, goes good there. One thing I did for my office here, there's a company called Breach Secure, it's out of Bendex Technologies. They do a training, a weekly training through email on the dark web, email phishing, just security of your network and all that. That's something that I think the whole county's kind of been lacking and I've been exploring a little bit. We're testing it out here with the Sheriff's Office. There's a small fee each month of 60, $65 or something like that for all my staff to be able to do this training. Once a week on a Thursday, they'll get an email with a short video. I'll click in and they'll be able to watch this video and there's a short little quiz test just to make sure that they've been able to do this. As part of this package, there's dark web scanning, so they can scan our emails and scan some of our information, our network, and make sure that there's anything out there. And they did find some of our emails and some of our information out there on the dark web, so. We've been actively working on changing passwords and trying to stay ahead of that. So this has been some really good training so far. We're still in the first stages of trying to get everybody up and going on it. But it looks like something that probably be, be good, something that we're working on, so.
How are you going to implement that so that all of the, all of the people in your department can actually get involved in that? Is that, you're going to set aside that? You just can't pull everybody out.
Absolutely.
You have to do it.
And then that, that's the one nice thing that I was looking at for something here is, it's, it's essentially a virtual training. It's a learn at your own pace. It's something that each week, this company actually does it. We had to set up our emails and do a little bit of work behind the scenes, very, very minimal.
So they can do it whenever they're on duty.
Absolutely. So whenever they're on duty, they have three to five minutes. The initial training, I did it, it took me about 25 minutes. So the first initial, you know, there's, there's, there's some steps and videos, so you get busy. Same with me, if I actually, I, I got busy and I pulled away, then I come back and got to finish this module. It took about 20 to 25 minutes, all said and done, for me to finish my portion.
If I can interject, so we, I did, one of the places where I work, we did that as well and they, and so the employer can make sure that, you know, all the employees have done it, because we can tell, you know, when they're logged on, so.
There's a dashboard, yes.
So it's very effective.
Yes, just like Lee said, there's a dashboard that supervisors, we can see, make sure that everybody is getting their, their essential, their homework done. You can give them, you know, the timeline, we got to get this done. Once the initial training is done, every week, they're just a quick three-minute or just a three-to-five-minute email that you'll, either a newsletter or a video, this was some new updated information. Maybe there's a new phishing scam or there's a new targeted network thing that's coming out there that they'll try to keep us updated on, so. Just a good, good training to kind of protect your network and your security a little bit, so.
And that, and that, just to emphasize, you know, most of the breaches that occur, security are through email and just user, you know, oversight, you know, tricking somebody basically.
And I know, we've had those, I know Cindy's had them come through, I've had them come through. It seems like I'll personally get two to three a day possibly at times, where they say, wow, that's not legit, I'm not going to click on that, so. This helps recognize some of those threats that are being sent and that are coming and going, so.
We have some of that, but not to that extent, so.
Yep.
Well, I think we've been talking to, well, anyway.
Yep, as, as part of this, like I say, they'll also send out, they'll target your staff and they'll send out fake. Yep, as, as part of this, like I say, they'll also send out, um, they'll target your staff and they'll send out fake stuff as well, just to see if you click on it. So there's some testing involved with it as well, so they're actually testing our staff and, um, testing. Supervisors are testing all of us just to make sure we're not clicking on something we're not supposed to and. Probably send us that, aha, gotcha, email if you did, and they'll report back to us, so.
So far, everything's going well.
So far, everything's going well and it's, uh, been good, so.
Don't click on it if you don't know.
Well, I tell you, I got caught this week. I, um, I, I was, I was just shocked. I, something popped up in my cell phone and I'd been trying to get ahold of Natalie and I thought it was Natalie replying and I hit it. And it was not Natalie. I, I hope it wasn't Natalie anyway. Anyway, I was just embarrassed. And then I, you know, I kind of froze up, you know, how do I get this stuff off? You know, how do I, I mean, it was some obscene pictures. They were bad. I mean, they were nasty. And I just started pushing buttons, which I shouldn't have been doing, you know, but it, it did disappear, so I, I don't know. I. I figured it was somebody probably trying to sabotage, you know, my iPhone and, and then file charges against me, you know, later on. But it's terrible the way that stuff works now.
There's a lot of crazy stuff.
Out of nowhere, I mean, just boom.
Yep. There's a lot of, a lot of crazy things out there.
Yeah.
I'd say technology's constantly changing and that's what's nice about a company like this where they're, they're staying on top of that and they're trying to give you the updates as they come out, so.
Awesome.
Good. I think one of the things that is important here is, one of the things that we've been hearing from your folks, uh, in the, uh, detention center is that they've been requesting more and more training on a continual basis and this, this should help fill that request, I would think.
Yep.
That's good. Good that you're taking that on.
Yep.
All right. Have anything else for us, Brad?
That's all I got.
Thank you, Brad.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you for your part.
Have a safe holiday.
I hope so.
Quiet, and all your staff.
Uneventful holiday.
Quiet.
Unevent.
All right, we will move on then to item number seven, public auction for hay rights on county-owned property. And Troy, if you would introduce that, or Cindy, if you want to give a little introduction, let Troy take over after that.
The contract that we had for the lease of county property for the right to put up hay on the property, um, expired in October of twenty-twenty. So we, this is a two-year contract that we have offered the last, um, the last time, it was two years. It is nine point four acres, more or less, of county-owned property on Highway two twelve. Lots two and three of the discount seat addition to the municipality of Watertown. It's on the north side of Highway twenty.
Okay. Well, I guess, I don't know how I got roped into doing this, but I think I did it one time and I'm gonna do it again.
Kind of like.
I'm gonna try it, so. Uh, okay, so as Cindy said, it's nine point four eight acres, more or less, uh, to be paid on or before July fifteenth. We're gonna start the bidding at fifty dollars per acre. Fifty dollars per acre? Anybody? Okay, we can go up to seventy-five dollars per acre. That makes, okay, we'll go down. Uh, we'll go down to forty-five. Forty-five dollars per acre. All right, see, no bids. Drop it down five to forty per acre. Forty dollars per acre. Thirty-five dollars per acre. Thirty-five? Thirty-three fifty? Thirty dollars per acre. All right, thirty dollars per acre. All right, we do have a bid for thirty dollars per acre. Thirty dollars per acre going once. Going twice. Sold. Thirty dollars per acre. A gentleman in the black shirt. Tyler.
All right. Cindy, you'll.
Yep, I have a contract that I will have to have signed by both you and Tyler.
All right. Okay. Uh, we'll move on to item number eight, action to accept a bid for a hall road restoration, BEAI number two-three-five-one-seven-point-zero-zero. And that would be Rick. Good morning, Rick.
Yeah, good morning.
You don't have the, anything for me to project, do you?
I just gave him the Cindy this morning. I just got him yesterday, so. I think, uh, Wayland should be.
He's on there.
Yep, there he is.
This is from last week, I believe. This is what?
Yeah, that, that was the.
Big text.
This is to award, uh, Dunick's with the, uh, bid for the restoration project.
I'll make a motion to, to award.
Did we want Wayland? Well, I guess we can get a motion on the floor and then we'll.
Yeah, I make a motion to, to award that bid, so.
Motion by Gable, second by Johnson. Good morning, Wayland. Do you have anything to add to, um, the conversation?
Yeah, good morning. Thanks, Brenda. Um, no, so, uh.
As Rick mentioned there, I did write up a, a short letter of recommendation, um, to recommend awarding the bid to Dunick. Um, if you don't mind, I can quickly read that to the, to the commission members. It just says Banner has reviewed the bids received by Connington County South Dakota for the project, um, Connington County Hall Road Restoration. And has verified them to be correct and complete. Banner has spoken to the low bidder, Dunick Incorporated, and has confidence that Dunick and their subcontractors have the capability and capacity to complete the project within the timeframe allotted by the contract documents. Dunick is prepared to start work on the project immediately after receiving the official notice to proceed. Um, so with that, Banner formally recommends to the Connington County Board of Commissioners that Dunick Incorporated of Prinsburg, Minnesota, be awarded the contract for BAI number twenty-three-five-seventeen-point-zero-zero, Connington County Hall Road Restoration, at Dunick's unit price bid of eight million forty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. So, just a, a formal, uh, recommendation. Other than that, uh, that's really all there is to it.
Is the, is the notice of award the same thing as notice to proceed?
It is not.
Are they two separate documents?
It is two separate documents, so the.
Notice of award, um, lets the contractor know that the, that the county intends to enter contract with them for the project. So what happens after the notice of award is, uh, I actually am going to bring up the remaining contract documents today. Um, and we will, the county would send the, there's three copies of the agreement, um, the project manual, the plans. Um, and then a couple other documents that go with that. We send that to the contractor. Um, it notifies them that they've been, uh, awarded the project. They have fifteen days essentially to return three signed copies of the contract documents. And then the county will sign those and that's the, the final execution of the contract itself. At that point, we can provide the notice to proceed, which allows the contractor to start work on the project. And so, um, by, usually by signing the notice to proceed, the, the owner, um, agrees to sign the contract once they've received the executed counterparts from the contractor. And so, you know, for today's action by the commission, the, uh, the action to approve the notice to award the contract, would also, uh, essentially approve the signing of the agreement with the contractor to enter into work together. If that makes sense.
Okay, we have two separate motions or two separate actions. We've got action to accept the bid and then action to authorize the notice to proceed.
So do we need those as two separate actions or?
Yes, yeah. Two separate actions. So right now, we have an action or we have a motion and second to accept the bid that will be our first order.
So that's the motion. That's, that's the term.
To accept that bid of Dunick. That's what we have on the floor right now. All right. Is there any other questions or comments or ready to vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number nine, then, action to authorize signing of a notice to proceed with Hall Road Restoration Project. Okay, we've got a motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Or it was, okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Waterman. Um, any comments or questions on that? And before you go, Wayland, you can update us on the, we have, um, the agreement also in place or that's been signed. So we'll just vote on this and then we'll just get a quick update on that. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Just an update, Wayland, on the agreement that we finally now have signatures.
Sure, yes.
Thanks, Brenda. Um, so as, as Brenda stated there, we did receive the, uh, the agreement signed by both Crown Ridge Wind One and Northern State's Power Company. Um, it was the, the, I guess, the amendment to the hall use agreement, which, um, added their, uh, responsibility for paying that base dollar value of eleven million, um, four hundred and some odd thousand dollars to the county. That payment has been received. Um, I verified that with Carol, uh, in the, in the county treasurer's office. Um, and, and now, uh, I was actually surprised that they would send the dollars before they had a fully executed agreement, but I know that they knew what the most important part was, and that obviously was the dollar, so, um, I was glad to see that come through. So I believe that we have, uh, all of the documents in place, um, outside of, uh, obviously a county signature on that, just to complete that. Complete that amendment to the agreement, uh, for, for everyone's records or for all parties' records. So we should be good to be able to move forward. Rick had mentioned that he's spoken with Carol and the finances are in a place where they're, uh, they're separate from, or, yeah, they're separate from other county finances. We can track it as well, because the county will be responsible to return, uh, remaining funds back to the developer. So, uh, we'll ensure to track that accordingly, but.
Yeah, so, and you get, you all authorized me last week when we would get that agreement to sign it, so we'll get that taken care of. And then I think we have everything wrapped up and to move forward with this project, so that will be good. All right, anything else, Wayland, that you wanted to bring to our attention?
No, I think that was it. I certainly appreciate all the help from the county, uh, in getting through this, whether it was, uh, from Rick or from the commission or from the auditor's office or the treasurer's office. So it was, it was certainly a team effort and, and from the state attorney's office, so. Looking forward to seeing the construction move forward for Connington County.
Okay. Very good. Um, so. After talking, did we vote on that?
Yeah, we.
Hall road, okay, we voted on both, right? Or just the one?
Yeah, you had us.
Okay.
Before, before.
Are we talking, okay. Very good.
Thanks, Wayland.
Cindy asked me and then I started questioning it. I thought we did. It all happened so fast. All right, thank you, Wayland, for all the work that you've been, uh, much appreciated on helping us get through all this, so. Thank you and Banner.
Yeah, certainly.
All right.
Monday.
Yes, you too. Thank you. All right, Rick, was there something else you needed to mention to us before?
Yes. State Highway twenty will be closed tomorrow night from midnight to four AM. They're going to, uh, one of the Witten Tower Dakota Range is gonna walk right across the road. And they're closing State Highway twenty between four fifty-ninth Avenue and four sixtieth Avenue. They can get around on the township road. And, uh, it'll be tomorrow night. And there, uh, Thursday night will be closed both nights according to what I received, so.
That's the time period again that they're gonna close?
Midnight to four AM.
On both nights?
Yep.
Okay. All right, very good.
That's the.
Thank you.
Okay. I thought it was just Thursday morning from midnight till four.
Twenty-third to twenty-four.
So they must be taking it and then bringing it back, probably.
I would imagine.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, very good. Anyone else have anything for Rick? Otherwise, thank you and.
Great.
Let's go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, let's move on then to item number ten, action to approve emergency rental assistance to program contract. Uh, we have Carrie and, um, Sarah here to explain that to us.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. So I will just introduce it and then I'll let Carrie talk about it. She's the one that's really been managing this program in our office. Um, so this is the contract to approve the emergency rental assistance program two. Um, and so it's what we've already been doing. It's just the next contract. I do want to point out that the terms of service date it from June first of twenty-twenty-one through September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. So this is to go on for the next three years. Carrie can tell you a little bit more about the revenue, the contract we're gonna do.
Yeah, this one, um, same, the same guidelines, eligibility and stuff, uh, is the same for, um, if they call it ERA, Emergency Rental Assistance, one, and then this is ERA two. Um, so the guidelines are the same, um, just different dollars amount. For ERA one, um, the state was awarded two million dollars. For this one, um, they were awarded a hundred and fifty-two million. And so far, we, the state has received a hundred or sixty million so far for this program. And, uh, so we've been processing these applications. Um, I did send the contract to Tom Burns. He got back to me this morning. Um, so that it was, everything looked good, same as the other contracts. Um, so we're good there for, to go ahead and sign and set. So with this one, with the two programs, we can actually help up to eighteen months. So the first program helps up to fifteen, so they use about fifteen of ERA one funds. Then they can use an additional three months of the, of the ERA two. The one difference between one and two is that, for one, they have to be affected by COVID. With ERA two, they just have to have a loss, um, or an income or increased expenses during the COVID pandemic. So, and all of it has to be, you know, they have to have documentation. They can't just come in and say, hey, I lost income and, uh, you know, that kind of thing. So they'll have to have documentation and we do verify everything and stuff. So we've actually processed, um, almost a hundred applications since the first of February, um, since both programs have started. So just to kind of give you an idea, last year from the end of October to December, we processed a hundred and eleven.
Wow.
So we've done almost a hundred from February to now.
And that's just us. That's not including what ICAP has done as well.
Correct, yep, yep.
So. I'll make a motion to approve this second.
Okay, motion by Gable, second by Van Dason. Any other discussion or questions?
Is it, so is there, uh, the way I've seen this, the way, the way this works as far as all the money is passed? So we engage in this and then the state just funds it as, as it happens, basically?
Yep, once I, once I get done processing, uh, asset, processing an application, then I send it off to South Dakota Housing. They redo another review just to make sure that we have all our documents in order, um, and then they cut the checks and.
Directly to the.
Directly to the landlord or the utility company.
Okay.
And just to let you know too, there is gonna be another one coming, um, probably late July, we think, July, August sometime. This one is gonna be for housing. Um, it's called Homeowner Assistance Fund and it's for homeowners only. And, uh, this, the same theory, it's just gonna be for homeowners with mortgages. Um, that'll help for that, and I think they set aside fifty million dollars for that one. Um, they're estimating it to start August first.
See, that was, they were eligible the very, very first one for help on mortgages and now these other two are just strictly rentals, so now they're bringing back.
Yeah, and we do still have funds available from the one for last year for homeowners, so we haven't been turning them away either. We've been processing them using twenty-twenty funds. Um, but this is just the additional. Um, the, uh, the income guidelines are a little bit higher for this new one, it looks like.
On the housing.
Yeah, because they figure, you know, a lot of people are gonna be coming out of their, um, forbearances now, um, because it's been, you know.
Right.
Twelve, they could be on it for, I believe, up to eight, fifteen to eighteen months for forbearance. So a lot of them, we figure are gonna be starting to come out of that.
Right.
And then they're gonna need the assistance.
Because they did really drop down the income on that very first one for homeowners. That one, that went down. I mean, so a lot more people were eligible.
Right, and this, this next one is a little bit.
Back to.
Is that, it's a little bit, um, it's actually better, I mean.
Right.
People will call, more people will qualify for it.
Okay.
Just as a reminder to you, the county has reimbursed fifty dollars an hour for all of the time that Carrie puts in, so. Um, it, we definitely come out ahead and, and we're also able to assist county residents, so it's gonna win the way around for Connington County.
Because if you had to, I don't even want to say guess, you're putting in quite a few hours on just this program.
I would take three quarters of my time in, um, this, if not one. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah.
Yes.
I've been grateful she's been able to do that.
Appreciate the work.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's a lot of paperwork. All right. So if we have anything else, I think, oh.
I have a contract.
Oh.
I have one. You have one too. Okay.
Okay. And so on your deal, like with the insurance thing, maybe we'll wait and do that during old business?
Just Carrie is just excited. Yeah. Why don't you leave that one?
Yeah, yeah. Well, just, yeah, but your other thing, I just wanted to wait and. Okay. Are we ready to vote, or any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, action to adopt the resolution for continued support of the First District Association of Local Governments. You have that in your packet. This is just our, Cindy, you go ahead.
This is an annual resolution received from First District Association. The amount that they will provide, or the amount that we will provide them for services in fiscal year twenty twenty-two is forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and ten cents. It's a slight increase from last year that does go up every year based on twenty-ten census population.
Motion.
Motion by Waterman, second by Van Dusen. Okay, second by Gable. Yeah, so this will be the last year of this, because they did it for ten years. And now with the new census again and redistricting, they will put together another proposal for all of us. And so that will be coming also. That's in the works. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. All right, item number thirteen, action to approve permits to discharge fireworks.
First one, the applicant is Darcy Thonbold. The date of request is July tenth. The address is one six six two six four hundred and fifty-fifth Avenue Watertown, which is in the Watertown Fire District. Second one is Kathy Daigle, with also a July tenth request date. The location of the show is one six five four nine four hundred and sixty-third Avenue. And it is in the South Shore Fire District, and both have been signed off on the fire chief or the fire representatives from those districts.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Waterman. And just keep in mind, these are different than normal under state statute. So when we have a burn ban in place, these are not allowed. Just FYI.
When we respond to the applicants, we should note that if there's a burn ban in place, these become known void.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, because these are outside of the timeframe of when they are normally allowed by statute. All right, I guess we need to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item number fourteen, action to approve the purchase of a copier scanner equipment for the veteran service officer. And we received some information about that, but good morning, Todd. I'll let you explain.
Good morning. I looked at, we've been looking at this for a while now, and I did look at the main office printer. It's very old. It doesn't have some of the technology that we'd like to have. After Commissioner Johnson, when I talked about this here a couple of months ago, mentioned about having a backup. We switched gears and we started looking to have two smaller multifunctional printers in each office. This would allow us to upgrade the technology in both areas. They would be the same type of system. It would also update our scanning capability, get rid of the connection problems that we're having with our own scanners right now. So that was, we looked at that, and price-wise, we could basically get into the two smaller versions. And along with this, trying to go to a more paperless office, having better scanning capability, we thought would be a better way to go from that standpoint. Along with that, I talked with Connecting Point and about upgrading Peg's computer. Hers is like a G series, and now they're at a G six series, so it's been several years since that's been updated. Going through all of this, bottom line is that we would acquire two HP multifunctional printers and update Peg's computer at a current cost of about fifty-three hundred dollars and twenty, fifty-three twenty-nine, according to the bids that I have from Connecting Point.
I'll make a motion to.
Motion by Gable, second by Johnson. Any other comments or questions?
Are these printers, are they more than what you need? I mean, we had a discussion about how many copies you make and stuff. I just want to make sure it's not overkill. I mean, that seems like a pretty tight price.
If we, we could possibly go to a little lower, the next level down. But as far as toner cartridge and toner usage, for me to put, like I have a colored one, it's four hundred dollars, a little over four hundred dollars to put toner into that. And we tried to look at what it was per page, you know, how much it got down to like ten cents a page. I pondered this for quite a while, and I thought that we are not going, neither one of these have a service contract with them. The other ones that we were looking at, the other businesses that I looked at had service contracts, which were anywhere from twenty-five dollars to about thirty dollars. And then that could possibly increase every month as the machines get older. These do not have that. I'm rolling kind of hoping that they don't get used as much for printing, so they'll last a little bit longer from that standpoint. That's my thought process. I don't know if that completely answered your question or not.
No, I'm fine with it. I just, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're buying something that's not going to be overkill for the office over there. But if you've done the research on the printed page per, you know, the cost per page, then I assume you know that.
If I remember, you're right. This is not in your budget or is it in your budget?
It is in the budget. We will not, it should not affect our budget.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number fifteen, discussion possible action on employee cell phone stipends. I will ask Natalie to please come up. She sent an email out to us, and we have some other information. So I'll just let you explain, and then we'll go from there.
Sounds good. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
So I had looked into a little bit of this for you, just, and it kind of came about as part of the compensation study that you did, because we had looked at all the benefits and things like that for the employees. And I think the question was, you know, whether or not we should pay more, we should pay less, we should eliminate it, kind of all of those things. So I am just recommending that we keep the basics of what we have right now. Based on the research that consultants did, the amount we're paying for cell phones seems reasonable. We are lower than some counties. Providing a stipend will be a cheaper cost to the county than having, you know, the county actually carry the cell phone plan, in which case you're responsible for the minutes and the cost of the phone in that regard. I do think that we need to make a formal policy, because what's in the personnel manual right now is very vague as it regards to cell phones. I had attached to you, you probably, or some of you I see have that, like what Pennington has. Cindy had gotten that for us. And so I think that just formalizing the policy a little bit more, reminding employees, the one thing I didn't see in Pennington that I do think we need to add is that if they are getting the cell phone stipend, they are subject to open records requests. And so anything that they do within their personal cell phone is public documents. So they need to know that if they are getting this, that that could be something, and so they agree with that as well. The other thing I just think that we need to do is formalize what people are getting right now and try to put it, you know, in writing as far as what we're giving and why. So I would say, full-time employees who job requires them to be away from the office or shop on a regular basis, and maintenance, equalization, highway, and sheriffs, along with detention center sergeant, state's attorney, and deputy state's attorney would receive a cell phone stipend based upon the new pay grades, is my recommendation. And so fifteen through thirty-five would receive twenty-five dollars a month, forty through eighty would receive forty. If they're a part-time employee, then I would say they should get half of the amount. There would be a few people then on this list that would be affected. And I'm also, I guess, recommending that we do not pay cell phone stipends to non-employees, contractors, things like that. There's one situation of that right now. So overall, it's not going to change what you're currently paying very much. Like I said, I think there's two individuals that would go up, and there's a couple that I'm questioning on whether or not they should get it, that are not on the list. But I know one of my question has two, see Carrie's two phones, is that the situation?
Yeah. And I think they have plans.
They have plans. That makes sense.
I believe.
Yeah, thank you.
Check with Gaddy, but I believe that's great.
Okay. So that's my thoughts. Any questions or comments or concerns?
I like the general idea, and it's, you know, it's just, it's a matter of writing down into policy, you know, why we're doing, and, you know, thinking it through a little bit, and it might change a few things for some people, but for the most part.
Yes.
This policy from Pennington County does state that they are subject to public records.
Oh, good. Okay. Good catch.
And the privacy and security on page, I guess it'd be on the back of page two there. Employees that conduct official county business on their personal or county-provided cell phones are subject to public records and open meeting laws. So.
Perfect.
The verbiage that we can put into our policy.
Yeah.
So, so we're just, that's one thing you're stuck with is helping to go.
Yes. I will, I will probably borrow a lot of what Pennington has and put something before you, because they did a good job on it, I think, so. But we do need to decide this today, right? Because.
Well, yeah, to pay bills, I guess we need a motion on the, it's kind of middle section there of Natalie's email.
Pay grades.
On the pay grades and how much per month would help to get us these payments made with bills in July? Because by the time we meet on the sixth, we're going to be working on claims. So if we could have it before then, that would be great.
So.
So pay grades fifteen to thirty-five would receive twenty-five dollars a month. Pay grades forty to eighty would receive forty dollars a month. Part-time would receive half of the stated amount.
Based, and then the guidance before that, I think is important for people to hear again, that, you know, it's for people that where their job requires them to be away from their desk, basically.
On a regular basis.
And then what about that last sentence? And cell phones will not be provided to.
Non-county employees.
Employees. Is that part of the motion?
Well, I, okay, no, I love me.
I don't know how we address that.
Let me, let me look.
So we have a gentleman that is part of our search and rescue team commander. Is he a county employee?
He is paid through payroll. Yep. He is paid a non-call amount. Yep.
Okay.
So let me read, oh, read, you read part of it, Brenda, but go ahead.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, you know, if you have, if you have non-employees that you feel like you still need to do something with, to me, that's part of like their separate contract.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay. So this, what, yeah, Natalie's proposing, then so, based on the new page, so this would go at the new page scale that we, we've adopted based on the compensation study. So hold on, employees whose jobs require them to be away from the office slash shop on a regular basis. And so this would pertain to maintenance, equalization, highway, sheriff's office, and detention center sergeants, state's attorney, and deputy state's attorney would receive a cell phone stipend as follows. So pay grades, this is the part that Commissioner Hanton already read, but fifteen to thirty-five would receive twenty-five dollars a month, and forty to eighty would receive forty dollars a month. Part of employees would receive half of the stated amount. And then we'd also not, it would not, not provide a stipend for contractors.
Non-county employees.
Yeah, for non-county employees, so. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, have a motion or a second. So any discussion?
So, and just so folks, employees, and others understand that we're still gonna, I mean, this is what we need to do to get the pay scale going, so that everything lines up. In the meantime, we're also going to be working on a policy that clarifies everything, that we make sure that we understand why we're doing what we're doing and rules to go with it.
We've been talking about doing this for a while now.
Yeah, this is a, this example is good, fine.
And we will update our policy as well in our handbook. Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, there is a number of home plans that have been publicly aired starting about six weeks ago. And you can get six to fifteen gigs of data unlimited, unlimited for thirty-two to thirty-five dollars a month. So I can't agree with forty dollars and twenty-five, and that's available to everybody.
I think.
Why are we saying that? I mean, that's fine for this doctor to say this, because as she's over in Illinois or Michigan, wherever, and doesn't go digging around for, to save money like I do, I'm sure. But this is public record. Why are we, why are we paying somebody ten dollars a month on their home bill? They could go someplace else, because that's the plan, what they want.
I think that, I mean, what you're talking about is deals on data or minutes, which makes sense. But there's also the cost of the device, you know, itself. And so you're, you're including in what you're paying, you're, you're putting towards the cost of like the minutes or the data, but also the device, insurance on that device. If something, if the device breaks and they have to replace it, you know, that's kind of all wrapped into what you pay on the stipend, is how I look at it.
For the amount of, the amount of time that's used for these phone calls on county time, and breaking it down according to what this phone insurance would cost them if they have it is out of whack.
I think, I don't know. I mean, what, Pennington pays fifty dollars a month, and I know when they actually went up and looked at Brown, they have up to a hundred dollars a month. I can't remember off the top of my head like what Brookings was, but. There, it's higher, I think, so.
Looking at AT&amp;T plans right now, Charlie, just for the basic 5G access unlimited starter plan, it's thirty-five a month. And then it goes from thirty-five up to fifty. So that's.
Forty dollars, we'd be paying eighty percent of their home bill. Can't, if I didn't object. So one of the things we could talk about, I think, only rate the policy. But for now, I think we, you know, I don't know if we can debate this detail now, since we need to do this.
Right.
Policy. Um. To a market. And. But there, one thing that Pennington County put in there is if that cost is less, you know, if the contract cost is less, then you could, I don't know, just only go up to that cost. They're not going to go over that at all. So that's something we could consider for the policy to take into, you know, so we can talk about Commissioner Waterman's concerns. So.
Now, there's another aspect to this. The county is paying a stipend to their phone. Okay, if you're using your phone privately, means the county is paying for part of that phone. They're texting, driving, and have an accident. What is the liability to the county for paying for part of that phone?
The policy says that they can't text and drive. I mean, you follow the state laws.
They can't.
So.
But if they do.
Then they're in violation of our county policy.
For part of that bill, so we're joined to that.
But I think you still say they can't do it, just because you pay for the cost.
Yeah.
And we can, and we can definitely, Pennington, that's a good job of, oh, like that rule, and, you know, that you're not supposed to take calls while you're driving.
Right, which I think is why we want them to have a cell phone policy that they sign, definitely. Yeah, to help with that liability issue, yeah.
Those are all things that we will address in our updated policy. All right, any other discussion? We ready to vote? All in favors? Well, I don't know if we need to call a roll call on this one. I think we should.
Gable.
Aye.
Waterman.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Van Dusen.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Four to one in favor.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seventeen, action to approve claims for payment.
We have four claims today, our credit card, end of the month bills, and a couple of others. First one goes to the South Dakota Association of Assessing Officers in the amount of eighteen hundred dollars, and that is annual school registration for our director of equalization and appraisal staff. Their schooling, I believe, is in September. The second one is Visa Relia Bank, and that is in the amount of three hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-five cents for the sheriff. for the sheriff's office for travel. The next one is also Visa ReliaBank, eight hundred and thirty dollars and forty-three cents. Um, that would be for Commissioner Hampton's, um, registration for NACO and also for supplies that we purchased for our district meeting. The auditor and treasurer traveled to peer for our workshop. And then, um, the veteran service officer for some supplies he ordered online. And then the final claim is to the Watertown City Finance Office in the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and forty-two cents. And that is for April nine-one-one surcharge collections.
Okay.
I'll.
Abstain from this.
Yeah, abstain from this vote.
Oh, or else we can separate the one off and you can vote on the rest. We could do it that way, too. It's just the nine-one-one.
I'll make a motion to approve everyone, so for the nine-one-one surcharge.
Okay. You can vote on the others.
I'll second his motion.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose. All right. Now we'll pull out just the nine-one-one surcharge.
I'll make a motion to approve the nine-one-one surcharge.
Okay. A motion seconded by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. All right. Um, item number eighteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Uh, nothing today.
Personnel changes. We have several of them.
Yes, and a lot of these are the step increases that are coming between July first and the end of the year. First one is Melissa Hart is the, uh, is a clerk in the auditor's office. She'll go to step eleven, twenty-twenty-two per hour. Janet Beavers is the first deputy in the treasurer's office, going to step fourteen, twenty-twenty-five per hour. Brian Bleeker is building maintenance. He will go to step thirteen, twenty-seventy per hour. Richard Cone, Kane Cone, um, is building maintenance, step five, seventeen eighty-three per hour. Lisa Felch is a transfer from the state's attorney's office to the sheriff's office, criminal civil coordinator, step seven, twenty-sixty per hour. Melissa Holquist is a correctional officer. She'll go to step ten, twenty-three thirty-three per hour. Wes Jennings is a correctional officer, step eleven, twenty-three seventy-eight per hour. Charles Rosso is a part-time criminal support coordinator, step four, eighteen seventy-three per hour. Ron Hartley, um, is a building maintenance at the Ag Building. And I believe, um, Mr. Mollengrath is switching him from temporary maintenance. He was hired to fill in for an employee who was, been gone for a year. And our facilities manager is switching him from temporary maintenance to full-time lead and building maintenance, step five, seventeen eighty-three per hour. Scott Swanson, lead building maintenance at the Ag Building, step fourteen, twenty-three forty-five per hour. Molly Simmons will be a seasonal weed sprayer, fourteen seventy-five per hour. Robin Ryder is maintenance two at the highway, step nine, twenty-three forty-four per hour. Jeff Argo is maintenance two at the highway, step six, twenty-two, twenty-two oh three per hour.
Move to approve.
Motion my gage is seconded by Waterman. Any comments, questions? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. That motion carries. Action to approve travel requests. We have a couple of those as well.
Yes. First one is Todd Rose, a veteran service officer, who needs to attend the South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs Certification and Benefits School. Second one is welfare, second and third, our welfare director, Sarah Faust, to attend the South Dakota Homeless Summit and attend a summit on building and crisis response continuum in our community.
Move to approve.
By Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any questions, comments?
I see on these, uh, travel requests that privately owned vehicle is being authorized for the travel.
That's what they're requesting.
Do we not have a county vehicle?
Why, um, I think our policy says that if there's a county vehicle available, you should take that. But this might be something that liaisons may want to take up with these, um, employees.
I just think because of insurance liabilities and that sort of thing, we're doing travel. We should take the county vehicle if it's available, so.
Correct. And I don't know if there's a reasoning behind their request or not, but. It's something that you could talk to them about and get changed before the travel occurs.
Do you know why she would be taken?
Yep. And that's, that's my opinion, too. Depending on how far I'm going, it's just.
Well, the vehicles that we use are also used by the Director of Equalization. So if it's going to be a few days, you know, it's hard to say if we can tie that up. If it's just an afternoon meeting or something is one thing, but if you're going to be gone for an extended time, but.
And so, okay, so, so I have to ask the question. I don't know if it's ever occurred or not, but what if she's on county business and is in a vehicle accident?
Has not ever occurred.
So how do we, how do we address it?
Her private, she's driving her private vehicle. Her private insurance would kick in.
Okay.
County would not be liable.
So it's assumed liability on your part by taking your own vehicle.
If she was in an accident and she was injured, workman's comp would.
Right.
But not, not vehicle insurance.
Okay.
My, it isn't where I live, no vehicle. And that is great.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Good. No, it's fine. It's just the city of Watertown required us to take a department vehicle if we were going for out-of-town travel unless it was approved by the department. So I just wanted to make sure that we're okay with that.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. That motion carries. Public notices, possible form of commissioners. We got two weeks, we're looking at here. Is there anything that we can think of? Um, of course, Fourth of July events, rodeos, um, could be a quorum, maybe possibly, other than that?
That's it. That's it.
Um, old business. So we will have Sarah come back up. Uh, she has a little bit of information for us now that in regards to the, um, rent, uh, the room that we're renting. And we talked about insurance, but now we have more information.
So that, the apartment that we said you had approved, the apartment, we had talked about having insurance to cover in case there was any damage done to the property. And so we've done some checking on insurance. I've worked with brothers and sisters behind bars. They have a family member that was able to give us a pretty decent insurance policy on that. Um, and so, I, there's the copy of the insurance policy. That's okay. Um, so.
Sure.
Oh.
Uh, do you need one? We can share.
Okay. Yeah, so it's through door insurance. It just basically, it's an insurance policy to cover if there's damage done to the property. It's five hundred dollars. This was included in the grant that we submitted, um, that actually brothers and sisters behind bars submitted a grant to cover extra expenditures. Um, so it will be in the county's name because the county is leasing the apartment, but it will be paid for under the grant by brothers and sisters behind bars.
So it's, what's the premiums?
Five hundred dollars a year. Oh, five, no, I'm, it's, that's a generalization. With that, um.
Let's see.
And I guess, um.
Oh, there it is.
Oh.
That's just the coverage.
I have it up. Let me grab my phone. It's right on. Um, and part of, I should say, it's more than what we initially anticipated because this insurance is actually really hard to find. There's a lot of challenges to it. Insurance companies don't do this kind of policy. They cover tenant property, but they don't cover damage like that. If we're our situation, we're kind of a homeless shelter. So.
Especially when you have different individuals coming and going.
Yeah, yeah. It, it was, it's actually very challenging. And, and I have worked with a couple insurance agents, which was, I was really grateful for their help. And this was just the one that ended up being the most feasible, so. Sorry, I apologize.
I usually, it is. It's usually that. Policy, it has the spaces for it, just not filled in.
Yeah, it was right around.
But you said brothers and sisters behind bars was picking up these parts.
Yes. Well, through the grant that they did. That should cover, we, the county may end up paying a small portion of it, but it's all within the budget that I have for the emergency. Yeah, it's exactly five hundred dollars.
Okay. All right. So basically what you're asking is, um, for approval for me to sign.
Can we take action? We're gonna see the action.
Uh, we'll probably have to put it on because it's not on. It was under old business when we talked about it. So it's not per se on the agenda for, um.
It was.
For action.
When we, when you had approved the apartment, we had approved it under, like, we had talked about having the insurance. So I don't know if it's more of a, here's the information about it or if you need actual approval to have her sign it.
I think under old business, can we do some things? Do it. It is urgent. We need to.
If, if we don't, if we have to wait to sign it, it's fine. We do have somebody that's moving in this week. So we just won't have it insured.
Oh.
I, yeah, I would declare it an emergency and just, yeah.
Since we did discuss this previously as part of the lease and we just finally were able to get the information.
Yeah.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Lee, did you have something?
So the motion, though, is that we have to declare an emergency because the urgency matters. So it's, yes, just so that's part of the motion.
All right. Everybody clear? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other old business? Not hearing any other old business, new business. So this is something, um, I received a call yesterday from a Brookings County Commissioner. Um, and it's something that, Lee, you have mentioned with the new, uh, monies, dollars coming in for the rescue plan. I believe is that the correct terminology that Cindy has signed up for. There's quite a bit of, um, work that's going to go along with this. There's some videos that need to be watched and just the procedures and that sort of thing. So you had mentioned maybe about hiring a consultant possibly, and they're looking at that. So I talked, I mean, maybe we can do this. I said, rather than all of us hiring somebody, can we do it jointly, you know, depending on how that would work? Uh, and share a consultant. And I don't know, first district.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna research this a little bit with first district. So I'll, I'll, I'll give them a call and see if that, because since they, they handle a number of counties, if that's, that's possible to do it that way.
So we thought about, when I talked to this commissioner, maybe it would just be our Sioux Valley Commissioner District, just those counties within that, if that's something that they think they can take on, so.
It could get to be quite an unwieldy beast, though, because each county might want to do, uh, you know, because basically, just so people know what we're talking about here, we're talking about this federal funding. I mean, part of it, effectively would be a county managed grant program, so maybe, maybe, maybe not. We don't know. We don't know a lot about it.
But I would think all the counties are going to be allowed the same thing. I mean, we're all basically going to be doing the same things because of what's allowed.
Different counties have different things going on, so they might, they might decide to do things a bit differently. So that's, is it workable that way? Yeah, I'm great if I save a little bit of the money, but.
Yeah.
But the core is going to be the same. That's what you're trying to share.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, basically, it should be the same. And I guess if we can share a consultant, it's more cost-effective. If that's something we can do, I guess I would be in favor of going that route. It's something we're looking at. Just want to let you know, I was contacted by Brookings County Commissioner and they are kind of on the same page.
So if we do that, though, you know, that, then we're gonna want to, you know, if we have that money going into a separate fund, are we gonna need to put that in this next year's budget? We might just have to do a rough, rough guess on how much that would cost.
Uh, we're, we've been authorized to do automatic budget supplements with this money.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so.
Department of Legislative Audit, yeah, it's, it's, it's an automatic budget supplement because it is basically grant money.
Right. And I guess, so we don't have to worry about budgeting for it. I don't want to offend you, Cindy. I guess I want your input. Um, would you be okay with that? Or I, I don't want to put another burden on you or your office.
No, the, I mean, the burden's on you guys because it's your money and you have to know how you can spend it, so.
I just thought, because I know.
I'm just here to pay. No, but the thing is, you apply for, let's do that process. I just. Right. It was my face that was seen on whatever, but forever.
But I, yeah, I just, I think that would be way too much. I would.
No, it's entirely up to you guys. I'm, I'm just here to pay the bills, as you tell me to.
Yeah, yeah. No, I just didn't think that was something you wanted to take on.
Responsibility.
Because I think it's more.
Gets what money.
It's pretty intensive.
It's a real, the House Bill 1259, where they.
No, no, that's.
No, that's a township one.
That's not, that's.
Well, I thought that was part of this.
No, no, that's. That's a township.
And that's your responsibility also. That is also your responsibility to know.
And that's still a work in progress. That isn't all the story.
Hopefully, that will be more clear cut, but.
I think they're working on that. Well, anyway, so just FYI, um, you know, other counties are thinking about this, if we can share a consultant, because I, basically, I think we should all be on the same page. But, um, we'll do more investigating. Just want to keep you in the loop.
As far as I know, no one is rushing to spend this money yet.
It's just not there.
Speaking of, speaking of the guidance, there's been a couple webinars. There's a couple more this week. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I think this one, was it Thursday and Friday?
Thursday at eleven that I signed up for, yeah.
That's right. So.
Unfortunately, they never give you.
Yeah, you don't, you, it's like, you always have this thing like, what about that one?
Well, and you, you better make sure, because I've signed up for them and you have a code and you get in, it's like, it's false. So like, you want to be ahead of the time because they fill up, even though they are, they give you a code, but. So I'm just FYI, don't wait till last minute to jump on. Um, anything for the open?
I, yeah, I do. Uh, we got an email from Cindy on this lease agreement.
Oh, yeah.
That is expired, that we need to take action on. Are we gonna put that on the agenda for next week?
Um, I need to get ahold of the, yeah, it will be two weeks from now. We're working on that. But yes, we'll get it on as soon as we get that information.
And it was, uh, facilities manager, Caitlin.
Okay, so we need to get that done.
Yep.
And then, uh, we want to discuss, uh, the Juneteenth holiday and what happened there.
Um, yeah, we will be doing that. That will be under contracts.
Okay.
Yep. So.
In exec?
Yes. Starting out because it deals with some of our contracts first. Um, and it's, it deals with personnel as well as to, yeah, what we're going to end up coming, doing with that.
Well, I don't think the issue of why we didn't know about that is a contract issue. That needs to be in executive session, so.
No, that isn't.
The signing of the bill happened on Thursday, Thursday afternoon, like Thursday afternoon and Friday afternoon, um, for Friday. So.
Natalie, why don't you come up? I guess if Troy wants to have a conversation, we can have on it.
I do. I think we owe it to the county employees to kind of explain what happened there.
This is not the union contract. This is just a personnel policy.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I guess I didn't even know, I'm bad about keeping up on the news, that this was a possibility that it was going to be signed. It wasn't even on my radar at all. And so I think we got noticed of it at like five to five. Cindy might have kind of been up on it a little bit more, but that, um, it had been signed and the official, we got it noticed from like another office. Um, it's where we got noticed from.
It's when the state decides to close. It's when we got notified and it was very late. Yeah.
And then it was after five, actually.
Yeah, um, yeah. Started with one office and.
On Thursday night, yeah.
So, and so the state's closed. So, so, and also the, the.
We knew the federal employees, we knew earlier in the day that they were getting the holiday. And I, my concern was our union contracts and how is this going to affect us? Um, if a holiday falls on a Saturday, the county observes Friday, which the federal government does also. Um, normally, I can give the public five days' notice if we're going to be closed. And Friday is a busy day here in this courthouse. There was court that day. People coming in to get license tags on Friday, so that was my big concern. Yeah, once for the general public, we can't just shut it down like after five on Thursday and be closed for Friday because people have taken off of work and have that day reserved or.
I think most of us, and, you know, in fairness to Natalie, I think any of us would have expected to, I mean, just because the bill got signed, it happened to get signed, um, you know, two days ahead of Saturday.
Right.
That we would have had time to prepare and learn how to look. I mean, you gotta think about local government and that. You know, we're, we're serving the people.
Taxpayers, yes.
Yeah.
So.
There were, there was no planning on this.
And in fact, when I, I was surprised when the, the president signed it. I was surprised when the, the president signed it, I just assumed it was gonna take effect next year, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a reasonable assumption, that's reasonable, yeah.
Right, so it just caught us off guard, off guard, and so we, we have to figure out how we're going to address this. But we just knew, we didn't want to close the courthouse on that short.
And the issue comes in the, the employee contracts that we have, that specifies that they're entitled to have that day off if the courthouse is deemed to be closed, and so.
So that would be a discussion for executive session, contracts and.
And how we're gonna do that.
Okay.
Right.
I just wanted to, to put that out there so everybody knew that we didn't forget, it was just a timing issue.
Right, we knew, oh, we're late in the day, yeah.
Employees will be taken care of.
Absolutely.
So again, this goes back to some of the other, you know, how do we wanna handle, you know, this might be another thing, will we look at the personnel policy manual to avoid this kind of situation, like to clarify this kind of situation.
Right, as long as we receive notice of the holiday, at least, you know, five days before it happens, I mean.
Reasonable amount of time, for sure.
That's one option.
Right, right, what do you deem reasonable, so, all right. Right, plus, as it says, any other is declared by the governor, so like this year, we've already had, well, last year, we had Thanksgiving, or the Black Friday after Thanksgiving, and then I think Easter Monday.
So it says, also non-working days by the President of the US or the Governor of South Dakota.
Yeah, and that's what happened in this case.
And that is the same language.
Yes, so, all right.
Right.
Anything else for the open?
I'm happy with that.
We have, need to go into executive session, um, I guess, call for public comments, but we didn't receive anything, I guess, so we should be all right on that. Um, under number three, preparing for contract negotiations with employees or employee representatives. That would be our need to go into executive session, can I have a motion and a second on that? Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, there will be nothing when we come out, just information only.